Hi everyone, my name is Aaron and welcome to my channel. I want to talk a little bit about Scientology and local Clearwater politics. A couple of weeks ago, the Clearwater City Council held a special session specifically to discuss the subject of Scientology. And really to discuss whether to even bother trying to allow Scientology to be a part of the process of a giant revitalization effort that's going on in downtown Clearwater. The city of Clearwater is moving forward with a very ambitious plan to revitalize its downtown business district. When people think of Clearwater, they usually either think of maybe Philly Spring Training, or the Clearwater Beach, or also Scientology. There are some that have the idea that Scientology somehow controls Clearwater, or occupies most of Clearwater, and this isn't actually true. Probably about ninety percent of all the economic activity in the city of Clearwater occurs down at the beach, and there's zero Scientology presence at the beach. And the city of Clearwater has really quite a large footprint, and the only presence that Scientology has in Clearwater is almost exclusively in maybe like a seven-block area in its downtown district. And even though Scientology occupies a relatively small portion of Clearwater, its presence in downtown really has been quite stifling for the business community down there, and it really has resulted in downtown Clearwater feeling like kind of a ghost town most of the time. And the city is, as I said, right in the midst of moving forward with a very ambitious and very expensive plan to develop, redevelop its downtown area, and the downtown area exists on the water, on a bluff. And these development plans include about a sixty-five million dollar investment the city is making into renovating a large portion of that area, and there's going to be hundreds of millions of dollars of private investment to go along with this as well. And so the big elephant in the room, really, when it comes to any conversation about revitalizing downtown Clearwater, is the Church of Scientology. The Church of Scientology is the primary reason why downtown is dead to begin with. So if you're going to talk about revitalizing it, you have to also talk about Scientology. So the Clearwater City Council held a special session about a couple of weeks ago to have a conversation about this exact subject. Should we partner with the Church of Scientology in this effort? Do we cooperate with them? Or do we move forward with this plan on our own without them? I want to show you parts of the conversation so you can sort of get a sense of where each council member stands on this issue, and then I want to discuss. So let's take a look at it, it begins right here.
Good afternoon, we will call the work session to order. We are going to start out with item eight, which is how do you want to interact with Scientology? Mark, we didn't know if you were going to make it, you know, it was looking slim, we were going to get that over with in about two minutes, but one of the questions is, can we cooperate? Or do we move forward alone? Or legally, do we need to be cautious about our speech? Certainly, this is always one of the elephants in the room when campaign season comes around, and we talk about downtown, so I think it's legitimate that we have a real conversation about it, so who wants to start off?
I just love the tone and the demeanor of the council members here, and especially the mayor, Mayor Frank Hibbert. You can tell that they are very aware of the fact that this conversation they're about to embark on, no matter how carefully they approach it, no matter how carefully they choose their words, they're about to walk through a minefield. It's like a combination of a circus and a shitshow, and they are very aware that they are, well, they're about to have an hour-long conversation about something that up until recently politicians in Clearwater were terrified to even mention. And anyway, I think it's very heartening to see how they're going about this in the beginning. You can really get a sense, they're not very afraid. They're almost amused at this gauntlet they're about to walk through. Alright, so let's see what's next.
In your legislative capacity, you guys have immunity, so you can make whatever comments you would like to make. However, what I would like for you to recall is when you start taking action, those comments that you make may come back to haunt you. For example, you passed an ordinance which you say is neutral from a religious standpoint. Now, this is an actual scenario, this happened here with us, back in the late eighties, early nineties, before I got here. And you pass an ordinance that limits, that case was solicitations. In the preparation of that ordinance, we laid the predicate that it was neutral as to religion. However, there were many hours' worth of testimony taken by council and public hearing, and many statements by the council that addressed Scientology specifically. So when a court looked at that, they looked at the numerous hours of public comments which expressed hostility toward the church and actions of the church, and they struck our ordinance and said, "This is not neutral." And they used our own language, our council's language, against us. So you can say what you want, but expect to see it again if we take an action which is perceived by some not to be neutral or based on religious matters.
Alright, so that was Pam Macon, the city attorney. She made some really interesting points that I had never heard or understood before. This sort of, well, I was going to call it a contradiction, I'm not sure if it's a contradiction. But on the one hand, the council members having absolute immunity when it comes to speech, but on the other hand, that speech can then be reinterpreted when they vote a particular way, and that that's how Scientology actually screwed the city previously, and was able to sue the city and win. I think, you know, fact-check me on this, but I'm pretty sure back in the eighties, Scientology sued the city of Clearwater and got like six hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand dollars. It was basically some sort of a discrimination suit, where the city had passed an ordinance, and the church was able to make a case that the ordinance was discriminatory against them because of things politicians had said about their feelings regarding the church in hearings prior to passing the ordinance. Anyway, I just thought that was fascinating, so I wanted to include it in this little edited clip. Alright, let's see what's next.
Go ahead, council member Bunker.
Well, can we cooperate, or do we move forward alone? After the Urban Land Institute came to town and told us the most important thing is we have to partner with Scientology, well, the first thing that Scientology did was stab us in the back and get in the way of the accord of moving downtown, which you said in the last meeting was the symbol biggest thing that could have made a difference downtown. So Scientology's goals are different than ours. I would love to take them at their word when they say that they want a vibrant downtown, but I haven't seen any actions toward that. Much of what they have done is try to keep the district quiet and private for them, so it becomes essentially their campus. I think there's a way for us to interact when we need to, if there's a land swap, for instance, that makes sense, but I see no reason not to go ahead with that. But my own personal feeling is, you know, they've been here since seventy-five, if they've wanted to make this a prosperous downtown, they haven't taken any actions to do that. In fact, it seems that in 2017, when they failed to get the piece of property they wanted, it seems like a coordinated effort was put in place to purchase all the remaining property downtown with cash, but I think we do need to be careful.
Anything else?
Okay, well, let me say a couple of things that will come back on. You know, when I'm talking about Scientology, I'm not talking about the religious beliefs or the Scientologists who are members of the organization. I'm personally talking about the organization itself, which was created as a mirror image of L. Ron Hubbard's paranoia and vindictiveness, and those policies that he put into effect are still in effect. And I do think we have a duty to let people know of some of their practices, like their drug rehab program, which continues to exploit people in this area and across the country. I don't know how we can do that as a city, but I think it's important to know that they prey upon grieving parents who are suddenly forced with the option that, okay, you give us twenty-some thousand dollars, or your son's going to die. And then they arrive there to find out that everything they were told about, you know, training professional staff and what they were going to encounter, wasn't actually the case. They're out twenty-some thousand dollars because their child has been booted to the street. And this is a situation where the entire drug rehab program are the opening steps in Scientology. So in one building, it's all religious practice, and another building, oh, it has nothing to do with religion, but it's the exact same processes.
When I watch this, what I see is I think Mark gets a little bit out of the council member's depth when he starts talking about Narcanon. The council members think they're sitting down to have a conversation about the Church of Scientology and the Church of Scientology proper, and anyone familiar with Narcanon knows that it is a sector of the Church of Scientology. So in some respects, you can call it Scientology, but in some respects, it's also not, especially in the eyes of these politicians. And I think you can tell that the council members start to get a little uncomfortable, maybe frustrated, maybe lost, but I think mostly uncomfortable, when Mark starts to get into this territory. This has been a really interesting dynamic between Mark and the other council members since Mark Bunker was elected to the city council. Mark's entire history is as a critic of Scientology exposing abuses, and the elected city leaders of Clearwater, they don't have any such history. And their intentions, I mean, a lot of these guys would rather, I mean, if you really asked them, would rather people just stop talking about Scientology. Not because they're an apologist for it in any way, but they don't like the attention, they don't like the negative attention that Clearwater gets when it comes to talking about Scientology. And it's one thing to talk about its presence in Clearwater, and maybe their bad behavior as a community partner, and it's another thing to start talking about internal abuses within the organization, and then even another thing to start talking about Narcanon, which I guarantee you many of these politicians don't even connect the dots between Narcanon and Scientology. So as a city leader in Clearwater, it's kind of interesting to look at, or maybe to think about, how some of these guys feel the need to like carefully walk this path between wanting to be able to talk about Scientology and what can be done about it in a way that's productive, while at the same time not just drawing so much negativity, and I don't know how else to say it really. I mean, an example would be, in a recent council meeting, Mark actually mentioned or proposed the idea of having another round of public hearings. This is something that happened back in the eighties. Having a round of hearings where people who have been hurt by Scientology had a platform hosted by the city, I guess, to explain exactly how they had been hurt by Scientology, and you could, when he proposed this, you could see the other council members were like, "What on earth are you talking about? Why would we want to have some sort of a public platform where people just come up and talk about how they've been harmed by Scientology? How is that going to help the city of Clearwater? How can that possibly encourage non-Scientologists to come downtown? How can that possibly encourage investment or development?" And so you can sort of see this culture clash that happens every now and then between Mark and where his head is at and where his mind is at in regards to his history of activism with Scientology, and then these city leaders who are on a completely different page most of the time on this subject. But aside from this culture clash, if you will, it is just amazing to see how Mark Bunker's presence on this council has really forced the issue of talking about Scientology, just talking about it in any way at all. It used to be something that would just never get mentioned, and now here we are, where the council's having a special session for almost an entire hour, speaking in public, speaking their minds on this very subject, and I think it's quite remarkable. So let's see what's next.
Council member Hamilton.
The way it's written on the agenda, you know, how do you want to interact with Scientology? Can we cooperate, or do we move forward alone? I think the answer to both questions is yes. Can we cooperate? Absolutely. Are we willing to cooperate? Absolutely. And I think when it's something that we require, that requires, or we desire Scientology's cooperation with, we reach out. Problem is, we don't always get a response. They have their own reasons for not responding, and they're the ones that have to give those reasons. I can't, I'm not going to sit here and speculate.
Alright, so that's Hoyt Hamilton, and I'm going to pick on Hoyt a little bit here, which isn't entirely fair, because there's nothing terribly wrong with what he just said. He's simply declining to speculate as to the intentions and motives of an organization he doesn't completely understand. Well, declining to speculate about something you don't understand is fair and honorable. The problem is that he doesn't understand it. The problem is that Hoyt is so uninformed as to the true intentions and objectives of the Church of Scientology, that he feels all he can do is speculate. That is a problem. Hoyt is like a third generation, at least, I mean Hoyt's family has lived in Clearwater forever, generations. Hoyt has grown up in this city his entire life. Hoyt knows plenty of Scientologists. Hoyt knows plenty of former Scientologists. But somehow, through all of these decades and generations, he doesn't have enough information about the Church of Scientology, Scientology itself, the Flag Land Base, the unique nature of the Flag Land Base, David Miscavige, the history of Scientology. He doesn't have enough information where he feels comfortable standing up there and just stating confidently why Scientology behaves the way that it does. I mean, again, I'm picking on him, and I like Hoyt. I consider Hoyt a friend, I like, I'm not, I don't mean to be unfair to him. But Hoyt is not unique in this regard. Too many of the community leaders in this area have spent decades or generations here, and still have no clear understanding of this organization, to the point that they can speak confidently about it. All they can do is speculate. I think Clearwater citizens are getting a little sick and tired of having elected leaders who don't understand Scientology well enough to speak about it emphatically and with certainty. Alright, let's carry on, let's see what's next.
But on projects that we don't need their approval, or they just flat say, "No, we're not interested at this time, and we feel it's a valid project, or something we want to do," I absolutely think we can go ahead alone. I recognize that parishioners of Scientology and the organization itself own a lot of properties, but they're not going to be transparent and cooperative with us and open with us to communicate and tell us what their plans are and that. I'm not going to sit and twiddle my thumbs waiting for it. You know, I think one of the other problems with Scientology is, you try and talk to some of the local people, and a lot of times it is, you don't get an answer, because the answer has to come from farther up the food chain, and we don't always get an answer from farther up the food chain. So, you know, it's a frustrating thing. As Mark said, we've, you know, they've been here since the mid-seventies, I think they were actually here even earlier than seventy-five, we didn't realize who they were until seventy-five. There's a lot of misunderstanding in our community about Scientology, and whether or not they pay taxes, which they absolutely do, only a very small portion of their overall holdings are tax-exempt.
Well, I'm going to stop Hoyt right there, that's a very unfortunate misstatement, and I have to wonder why he felt that was even necessary. It is totally false that only a small portion of Scientology's holdings are tax-exempt. As has been reported by the Tampa Bay Times, almost seventy-five percent of all of Scientology's real estate holdings in Clearwater are tax-exempt. The only reason they pay taxes on the other approximately twenty-five percent of the property is that they have to pay taxes on property that is hotel or restaurant, and most of their buildings have some portion of it dedicated to cafe space, or restaurant space, or hotel space. So they pay property taxes on just that portion of the property. Even though they only pay taxes on a quarter of their property, that still makes them the number-one taxpayer in downtown Clearwater. So you will never see Scientology neglect an opportunity to pat themselves on the back for being the number-one taxpayer in downtown Clearwater. But the reality is, they are at the same time the number-one drain on tax revenues for Clearwater. If Scientology's tax-exempt status were to be revoked, one of the top beneficiaries of that action would be the city of Clearwater. Alright, let's carry on.
However, you know, owning a property and paying tax on it is one thing, but when it's an empty building, and there's nothing going on, and nothing that benefits the community, an empty building does not benefit our community. Even though, even though it pays taxes, the empty building does not benefit our community. You know, if they're really interested in our community, I challenge them to get things going in those empty buildings.
You know, when I did my survey during the campaign, and I've told you, we got about thirty-two hundred responses back, this was where people spent the most time on the surveys. They checked off that they were happy with police, and happy with solid waste, and happy with parks and rec, and, you know, some went to the beach, some didn't, some thought the beach was too expensive to park, some didn't. But where the bulk of the time was spent on almost all of my questionnaires was in the section where I asked four questions about Scientology. And one of the things that I find interesting, and is a challenge for us as a city council, is that there are a lot of people that will say, "I will not come downtown because of Scientology." But then when we try to do something downtown with some of our lands, they don't want to allow that either. So on one hand, it's, "I don't care about downtown anymore, won't go there, but don't utilize some of your resources to actually change the dynamic in downtown." And that's one of the things I struggle with.
So this issue that Mayor Hibbert just mentioned is something he spoke a lot about on the campaign trail when he was, well, I guess it was last year he was campaigning. He spoke about this a lot. A certain portion of the citizenry will just say, "I'll never go downtown because of Scientology's presence there, you know, I just, I don't like being down there." But then they also don't really want to support efforts to fix that problem. You know, this is a problem. If we want to do something about it, we have to do something about it, we can't say it's a problem, then be like, "But we don't want to do something about it." So Frank, his whole vision, his whole, everything he's putting his effort into in regards to Clearwater, really is fighting this uphill battle to try to push through and slam dunk, or whatever you call it, a variety of initiatives to really bring downtown Clearwater back to life. And I have to say, I agree with it a hundred percent. He has my full support in all of those efforts. Anything we can do to attract crowds and crowds of non-Scientologists to downtown Clearwater, and give him great things to entertain them and feed them, is something I think we should all support, and he has my full support in that. Alright, let's carry on.
One of the things I don't like to do, and you all probably don't either, is to waste your time. And so if we're engaging with people with one of the biggest property owners downtown, I don't want to have to go through the whole story five different times to work our way up. And so is where council member Hamilton said, "You never know who you're talking to, or what kind of a response or follow-through." I think we should, you know, speak with Mr. Miscavige, or the head of the church, or whoever has some decision-making authority that will have follow-through. You know, I didn't do a survey, but I did door-knocking and had very similar kinds of responses. Younger people seem to be a lot more open to that wasn't their first priority. However, most door-knocks included, "What are you going to do about Scientology? What are you going to do about Scientology as in an action?" And so, it's interesting, so they, some people want you to do something, but then there, another part of, could be that same conversation with that person, is, "You just need to move downtown, further east or something, you need to find some other location for downtown." So, you know, it's, you can't have both. I think at the heart of it, people are not ready to give up on downtown, they don't want to cede downtown, and I think that when great things are going on downtown, people come downtown, or down to the beachfront. Certainly, I think the relationship should be open, we should continue to pursue it, and knock on the door, and hopefully expect a response, and just move forward in a real matter-of-fact way. And again, like, you know, council member Hamilton, we're going to move forward and we're not going to stop and wait, right? Not waiting for anybody. If you're not going to get on board here and move forward, we're going without you. You can jump on later.
So, good response from Kathleen Beckman there. I have not been a huge fan of Kathleen Beckman, probably because my first introduction to her was the fact that she was endorsed by the Church of Scientology. And at this point, I'm not sure I really understand why they endorsed her. I suspect of all the candidates, maybe she's the only one who was nice enough to them to give them the impression that, I don't know, maybe she could be their champion? Clearly, it has not quite worked out that way. And so anyway, kudos to Kathleen, I thought that was a great response.
Vice Mayor.
Well, you know, I've been thinking about this for probably two decades, at least. Just being down here with Scientology near us, I've always had, and I don't know whether I'm just an eternal optimist, but I think I've always had this feeling that Scientology does want to have a vibrant downtown. That's the end result they'd like to have, because, not really for our benefit, but for their benefit. And their benefit is, if they can get more people worldwide to come here to their Clearwater, a lot of people come in with money, and if they can say, "Well, we have the number-one beach, and we've got a vibrant downtown," it's going to be able to be a better sales pitch, you know, besides coming to take courses at their building, so.
Alright, well, now I get to pick on somebody whose name is not Hoyt Hamilton. Isn't it remarkable that somebody can be so ill-informed on the subject of Scientology? It's one thing to be an optimist, it's another thing to be misinformed. How in the hell does David Albritton think the Church of Scientology needs to give a sales pitch to Scientologists to convince them to come to Flag, come to Clearwater for auditing and courses? He actually believes there's some scenario where the Church of Scientology needs to go to its members and be like, "Have you heard we have nice beaches? Have you heard we've got nice restaurants? Come to Flag for auditing." Scientologists in the Flag Land Base could not give a good goddamn about Clearwater Beach, or restaurants, or movie theaters, or anything. They don't come to Clearwater for that. Sure, while they're here, would they like to catch a movie and eat a meal? Yes. Does it have absolutely anything to do with the decision-making process of a Scientologist deciding to come to Clearwater? It could not be a more emphatic no. Again, I don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill, but it's like, again, this particular aspect of being misinformed isn't particularly dangerous. I mean, I think as we continue here, you'll see Albritton does continue on to say all the right things, but isn't it remarkable? I mean, look, Albritton's lived here his entire life. His intentions are completely genuine when it comes to Clearwater, and the future of Clearwater, and the success of downtown, and everything. He knows Scientologists, he knows former Scientologists, and he still doesn't understand. Anyway, I don't want to beat it to death, but again, this is what Clearwater is up against. Leaders who don't actually understand the organization that is working to crush its own plans. Nobody should be confused about this. The Church of Scientology's goals, agenda, interests in the downtown area are completely contrary to the interests of the city leaders themselves. And a good portion of the city leaders, and I'll even say the community leaders, don't understand the organization well enough to understand why or how that's true. And I don't want to generalize, because in some funny way, it seems like your average citizen of Clearwater seems to understand the Church of Scientology better than the city leaders. And I don't know how that comes to be, I don't know how that's possible, I can't, I can't really figure it out. But when you talk to the citizens, they're not confused about the intentions of the Church of Scientology, but then you talk to some of the elected leaders, and you're like, "Where have you been?" Anyway, I don't want to beat it to death, but this is a perfect example. Alright, let's carry on.
I've always been of the mindset that we need to have an open conversation, and not with the minions that I've known and worked with for decades, with David Miscavige, because he's the one that makes all the decisions. It doesn't do any good to talk to anybody here, because they don't, they aren't going to relay the right information, they can't make any decisions, it's got to go all the way up to the top. I'm making a plea to the church to open up communications with their city, it's their city as well as our city. Work with the city, you want to get something done, work with the city. Work with us, we'll get something done. There's nothing we can do to make things illegal, I mean, we're a governmental body here. We can't outlaw Scientology, that's illegal, we can't, we can only do things within the law, so.
I cannot stress enough how frustrating it is to see, well, just like what David Albritton just did, jumps right into this weird straw man argument. "We can't outlaw it, we can't make it illegal, we can only work within the law." No one has ever implied otherwise. It seems like just an effort to rationalize away the lack of any real action of things you could be, could be doing or could have done, that would have been within the confines of the law. Stop talking about all the things that you can't do, because no one's asking about those things, it's such a waste of breath, and it sounds so defeatist. "Oh, there's nothing we can do, we're so limited." Yeah, but within those limits, there's plenty you can do that you have not done and are not doing. So why don't you just focus your attention on those? Anyway, I tend to get a little heated towards the end of these videos, so I'll try to tone it down. Alright, let's carry on.
First things first, I think we need to open it up, get a good, you know, dialogue going, and hopefully we can get somewhere with it.
And then he says, "Let's open it up, let's open up a dialogue, hopefully get things going," again, expressing a complete misunderstanding of the situation. Sure, open it up, sure, get a dialogue going. No, that doesn't have anything to do with moving things along. The reason to open it up and the reason to get a dialogue going is basically to show that the city, from its position, can be the bigger person, to show that the city is playing the role of problem solver. That's the reason to get a dialogue going and to keep a dialogue going, but you have to understand that the motivations of the Church of Scientology, and the interests, their own interests that they will work towards and exclusively work towards... and exclusively work towards, don't change just because you're now talking to them. In fact, the fact that you're now talking to them allows them to believe that they can successfully bullshit you. It's your job to not be able to be bullshitted. Or is it bullshit? I don't know. But the point is, you can see that Albritton still thinks that opening up dialogue with the Church of Scientology is actually what's going to open the door to possibly moving forward productively. And it's just naive. It's just naive. So anyway, let's move on.
So let me ask you this before I move on to the other. You're still committed to downtown?
Absolutely. This is my town. And I'm not giving it to you. I'm not wrapping it up like I've had some people say, just give it to them and move on. No, this is where I grew up. This is where my grandkid, my kids and grandkids are going to live. And I'm dedicated to downtown, and I want it to be for everybody in our community.
Councilmember Beckman, just that question.
Yeah, absolutely. Committed to downtown.
Councilmember Hamilton.
I agree, or I want to believe in what the Vice Mayor said when he says, he believes Scientology wants a vibrant downtown. But actions speak a whole lot louder than words. And action-wise, we're seeing nothing. We know about all the properties that they've obtained. They're all sitting vacant. Again, I want to believe they want a vibrant downtown. I want a vibrant downtown without question. And I think all of us up here want a vibrant downtown without question. But actions speak louder than words. When you own a piece of property, great, congratulations, you own it. But there's, but you also have responsibility when you own property. Commercial property, you don't buy commercial property unless you know what you're going to do with it. You know, they're buying up property with no plan, at least none, that's being, again, they're not communicating with us, so we don't know what the plan is. We can speculate. Actions speak a lot louder than words, and I'm not seeing any action. Period.
Councilmember Bunker.
I wanted to address a couple of points the Vice Mayor made. Yeah, Miscavige can snap his finger and get something done. But it took, what, how many years? Thirteen or so to open the Flag Building to finish that project? You know, how long is it going to take them to open up the Elrond Hubbard Music Hall? Just another gigantic, pretty Scientology project here that few, if not Scientologists, will go to. If they wanted to, if he really wanted a vibrant downtown, he could do that. He could still say, hey, Mortons, you want to open up a steakhouse here? He's not doing that. This is a unique city for Scientology. This is where the wealthiest Scientologists come to take the upper-level courses, the top-secret courses that you're not even allowed to hear a hint about as you're joining Scientology. So they're not trying to suck people in here in Clearwater. They're trying to suck in the big-money-paying Scientologists from around the world who are on the upper levels. And one thing they're able to do is say, look at the progress in Clearwater. Do you see the beautiful street full of the Way to Happiness Foundation and the Citizens Commission on Human Rights? All of these Scientology front groups. This organization needs an enemy. I don't think we need to be an enemy. I think we need, just need to be honest and show the city that we're not under their control. And I think that would give confidence for people to come downtown. Somebody suggested to me the other day that they'd like to rename one of the streets Lisa McPherson Way. And I think that would be nice for Waterson Street. I'm going to see if they want to actually propose that to the city. But I think that's a good step. I think once we have the park up and running, I'd love to see a statue to former Mayor Gabe Casaris there with a plaque saying sparkling Clearwater is not for sale. And I would like to see an exhibit at the Historical Society about Scientology's entrance into the city and the process that they took to destroy lives and take over at that point. You know, do I trust them? I trust Miscavige to do what Miscavige wants to do, which is whatever is in Miscavige's interest, not in the city's interest. If he wants to develop these buildings, he owns them. Go ahead. Or his Scientologist followers do. But he owns at least a couple blocks. And you know, if he wanted to do something, well, he could open up that movie theater, even though this is not a great time for movies. But he could do something. I doubt we'll see that, nor will we see him in public pitching his proposal as he did in secret to individual board members back in 2017. Because he's too afraid to show up in public. Because he knows he risks being handed a subpoena for one of these countless lawsuits that name him as the ultimate leader of the abuses that happen within Scientology. Again, this is not about religious beliefs. It's about the organization's actions. And again, if there's some deal we can make where it makes sense to swap some property, I have no problem with that. If Miscavige wants to sit down with me, I'm ready. I'd be happy to drop with you. But it's kind of foolhardy to think that we can become partners.
It really is just so cool to see Mark Bunker up there on the council and having a conversation such as this. A conversation that is really quite an important one to have with respect to the future success of Clearwater. When in the past, over the last fifteen, twenty or so years, the only time we've seen Mark Bunker speaking at the council is from the podium as a commenter from the community, being largely disregarded and ignored by the council members who really just didn't give a damn about anything that he had to say. And there he is up there, an actual member of the council. Everyone has to listen to what he has to say, have to take him seriously. And his presence there and what he has to offer is making a huge difference. And it's just, it's such a pleasure to see. So all right, let's see what else we have.
I do not agree that downtown has completely failed. I think there are segments that have worked very well. And I also hearken back to St. Petersburg that literally took decades to turn around. A lot of people, when I first moved here, wouldn't go to St. Petersburg either because there was nothing to do or because in parts of it was dangerous. Clearly, that isn't the case anymore. But they always called it the twenty-year overnight miracle. And you know, between the Cleveland streetscape improvements, the Marina, the Capitol Theater, the Apex, the Nolan, I think there are the underpinnings of a turnaround. I think people just have to give downtown a chance. If you want to see downtown become something different, you have to be a part of the solution. And the way to do that is come and spend money. And show other businesses that there's support for the restaurants and, you know, the Capitol Theater and other things that are downtown. And it'll build upon itself. I believe in the law of inertia. Once you get an object in motion, it tends to stay in motion and actually accelerates. It's getting it moving that's difficult.
All right, so the mayor says there, if you want to see Clearwater succeed, come downtown, spend some money, have a good time. I'll add on top of that, look, guys, there is one thing Scientology does not want more than anything else with respect to downtown. It does not want non-scientologists coming downtown, having a good time, and hanging around. If you want to give a big middle finger to the Church of Scientology or David Miscavige, come downtown. Go to the restaurants, go to the Capitol Theater. There's plenty to do. Spend money. Have some pizza, have some beer, have some wine, have a good time. I go down there all the time. Mark Bunker goes down there all the time. Actually, Mark and I have been doing some videos called Dining with the S.P.s, where we'll just pick a restaurant in downtown Clearwater and we'll have a meal. And we'll kind of, we'll sort of showcase the restaurant, showcase the food, and talk about Clearwater business, Clearwater politics. And we just recorded another one yesterday. Hopefully, it's up soon. So look, after this city council meeting that you've just seen, Mayor Hibbert requested a meeting with David Miscavige and got one. And the purpose of the meeting was basically to, well, to do what they just said. Let's, let's open up the dialogue. And although I was critical a minute ago of what David Albritton said about opening up the dialogue, my criticism isn't about wanting to open dialogue. It's about being naive about the intentions or what's going to be accomplished by opening the dialogue. I do not have that same criticism for Frank Hibbert. I have the utmost confidence that Frank Hibbert is not someone Miscavige can bullshit. In fact, almost two years ago, I did a video on this channel called Scientology is Terrified of Frank Hibbert. And if you haven't seen that video, when you're done with this one, go check it out. Frank Hibbert is someone that Miscavige really cannot bullshit. It also happens to be true that Frank's probably like fifteen inches taller than Miscavige and is a large man, and Miscavige is a very small man. So you know, he's not someone who's going to be intimidated by Miscavige either. So anyway, that's really all I have on this. I think the future of Clearwater, the next few years are going to be so fascinating and so exciting. And I really enjoy talking about the Clearwater politics and the Scientology angle down here. So I'm going to keep doing videos on this subject on this channel. And so you'll be hearing more about it. Well, that's all I've got for now. Talk to you guys soon. Bye.